Welcome to the March 22 Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. And first and foremost, does anybody have a moment of silence? Supervisor Pyska?
I have two. First, our Spanish teacher, Patty Jimenez, passed away. She was a Spanish teacher at Middletown High School for a long, long time. Supervisor Simon and I both had her. Did you have her? You must have had her. Yeah.
Yes.
And then also, we lost Kelly Stuckey, who was one of the best volunteers that our community ever had. Whenever there was a PSPS, she would open up the Lions Club Center. She was with the Lions Club, the Claude Mountain Lions. She coordinated food deliveries. Anything that was ever needed by our community, Kelly stuck up. Kelly Stuckey stepped up and provided that without hesitation, made sure everybody was fed, everybody had a place to go. Was active on so many levels, so we're really going to miss her.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Welcome, everybody. We have a big crowd today. It's pretty good to see that. Since we've been meeting in the chambers, we haven't had that many people. So, next item is consideration of extra items not appearing on the agenda. And we do have a 4.1, consideration of extra item A and B, consideration of nomination of Supervisor Pyska to serve on the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission. Did you want to?
Yeah, I received an email yesterday to submit an application, and it's due by Friday, so I wanted to get this on the agenda.
Okay.
Is there anything else to add?
CA O'Hutchins, anything to add to that? No. So, with that, I think I had public input, or do I? Yeah. Is there any public input on this request? Not seeing any on Zoom or even in the chambers, so we'll bring it back to the board for action. We would put this on the...
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the extra item for consideration due to the need to take this under consideration prior to the next agenda.
Second.
So, a motion in a second. Can we conduct the roll call, please?
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so, we'll conduct the rest of it later, at a later time. And then, today, of course. And so, next is the approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda items are, they're usually non-controversial, and we pass them all in one motion. And so, if there are any items to be pulled from the agenda, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 5.10.
5.10. Are there any others that anyone would like to pull? If not here, how about in the public? Open it up to public input if there's anyone that wants to pull anything from the agenda. Not seeing any there. I'll look online. Not seeing anybody online. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.9 and 5.11 through 5.19. Yeah, 5.19.
Second.
So, a motion and a second. Can we conduct the roll call, please?
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, now, we move on. It's 9:04, and it looks like it's 9:05 exactly.
So, what we'll do with that is go to the pet of the week. This is something we brought forward. It was done in the past, and we'd like to reinvigorate it. So, what we've agreed to do is work with the animal control, and they have brought in a friend to show off and see what we have going in our animal control department and the dogs, with the dogs that we bring forward and have.
If you walk around all the rows, you might get somebody that actually takes a call.
And there is an application, you know, I think we have it here. We can print it off if you want to adopt. Yeah.
Come here, buddy.
These friends need homes with good owners that will ensure they don't run out of the yard and...
Yep. If you face this way, it's probably a bite. Yeah. Hello, my name is Mary Paschke. I work with the animal control. I'm an officer there, and this is Buddy. He's an Anatolian Shepherd mix with Great Pyrenees. He's about two years old. He came in with a female as well that he gets along with really well. This dog is not designed for in your home. He is better off on a large-range property. He gets along with everything, but is super sweet and just lazy like this dog. Most of these dogs don't walk well on leashes, and he's amazing on a leash, I'll tell you that. He is available for adoption at 4949 Helbus Drive in Lakeport, or you guys can call 707-263-0278 if you have any questions.
And also, on the website, you can find his picture and all more information as well. He was the only one, one of the very few that did not bark at me when I went over there last week. All the other ones were just like, "Bah!"
How do you people come?
He's like, "Maybe."
That is the beast.
Oh, my God.
There you go.
He seems to love everybody.
Uh-oh. Black hands on him.
That's the reason to kick back.
Yes.
Oh, you want...
He says that to us.
Every cell was full, so, yeah, we need people to adopt. All right. While he's walking around, I'll move on.
He stole the show.
Yeah, he's stealing the show. I don't think I'm going to interrupt him.
I think we need this before every meeting we have during the whole week. Bring a dog in.
Well, what I found out is that terrier is now, actually, I thought someone was going to come get him or her. Nope. Nope, she's too wild for me. Our next item on the agenda is public input. Public input is conducted for the citizens. If there's, if it's an item that's not covered on the agenda, you can come forward and talk about something in the community or something within the county that you would like to discuss, and you would have three minutes to do so. And most of the time, you can turn in paperwork. It's a citizen's input request form, and I have four here. And so, let's see, I'll start with, well, if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to conduct public input, please come forward, and I'll let you decide how at order you're going to go in. Yeah.
Good morning, Supervisor Staff. Julia Carrera, resident and business owner in Upper Lake, California. I'm here today to talk about the levee system in Upper Lake. I have with me copies for each board member and pertinent staff of a letter from the Western Region Town Hall to the Board of Supervisors, District III Supervisor, Department of Water Resources, and Assemblymember Aguirre Curry. Before I start reading this letter, and my fellow neighbors and the chairman of Worth are here to continue reading this letter, I want to tell you my predicament as a business owner and a resident of Upper Lake. We have a levee system in Upper Lake that is currently in disarray. About 50 feet of one of the bordering banks, thank you, has fallen off, and about 1,000 feet is currently moving downhill. Your special engineers that you hired to review the system say that it won't hold a 100-year storm event. My concern is that the levee is compromised at this moment and actually will break if we have some kind of significant rain event, and the hydrology involved with that will take out the businesses and residences of Upper Lake in a way that we've never seen before because the levee has never broken. It hasn't been maintained. I'm going to go ahead and start reading. The purpose of Worth as a duly-appointed California Community Advisory Council formed by the BOS under state law provides the following issue review and recommendations for action. The Worth held public meetings and a vote representing a quorum of the council with Supervisor Crandall in attendance. The results of these meetings provided this information letter and recommendations to assist the District III Supervisor in bringing the issue in front of the BOS for remedy. Recommendations include an item on the BOS agenda to discuss with the Director of Water Resources remedies for the flood safety of citizens and property of Upper Lake, including funding and timeline. I'm going to interject my personal opinion here. I can't get flood insurance. I'm not in a flood zone. I couldn't get flood insurance because flood insurance only covers acts of, or only excludes acts of God. When I asked what happens if a levee that's unmaintained breaks or overflowed, they told me it wouldn't be covered. So, I'm screwed. I can't protect my over-million-dollar asset investment in Upper Lake from flooding that could be catastrophic. The discussion should include the program for maintenance, which would keep the Middle Creek Flood Bypass Channel in continuous proper repair in anticipation of unpredictable high rainfall storms, and a program for maintenance of historical Clover Creek, including proper channel bed elevations and vegetation control. Background regarding bypass channel.
Three minutes? Oh, we have three minutes?
If I could, Supervisor Chair Crandall, this is actually a discussion that we have at the Scotts Valley Community Meeting, and we've been incredibly successful in being able to maintain and repair the levees there. The issue is, is majority of the levees are privately owned. We're actually having discussions monthly on going in and cleaning up debris and removing gravel, which I know is needed all throughout the county, so I would welcome you to join our meetings, which is the fourth Monday of the month. You can find all the information on the Lake County website and join our discussions because the more people we can get together with the, have the same problem, I think we'll be able to solve these issues.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. I'm going to go ahead and let the remainder of the people speak and finish reading this letter. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Melinda Wright, longtime resident of Upper Lake, 22 years. So, I'll take up where Julia left off. So, the background regarding the bypass channel, the town of Upper Lake was formed in 1858 within the floodplain of Middle Creek and tributaries such as Clover Creek at the upper reaches of the Middle Creek wetland. This geographical position placed the town at risk for occasional seasonal flooding. A subsequent project by the Army Corps of Engineers developed a bypass channel to carry floodwaters of Middle Creek and Clover Creek tributary past the Upper Lake properties to the Middle Creek wetland. Because the elevation changes of the bypass channel are a low gradient, sediment accumulates following significant transport flows. The erosive action of these flows will also degrade channel banks. These changes reduce the channel capacity and combined with the accumulation of channel bed vegetation, provide a significant risk for flooding at increasingly lower flow levels. Even though annual rainfall totals have been at low amounts in the last few years, atmospheric river events are a known global moisture conveyor delivering unpredictable rainfall within a short period of time. These sometimes intense storm flows entering the channel can overwhelm its primary design, particularly when it's at a reduced capacity. The channels must be kept at an anticipatory flood flow capacity at all times with maintenance performed during off-season. This maintenance activity must be carried out under the proper agency maintenance permits and with the cooperation of local tribes who have cultural interests. During our discussions, it came to our attention that the county may not be keeping agency maintenance permits current. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife allows for a five-year agreement that can be rolled over another five years, which is significant time to develop a documentation for the next series of agreements protecting natural resources. At no time should there be a lapse of permit. In the opinion of knowledgeable citizens backed by historical flood occurrences, the channels and associated levee banks are in need of maintenance to restore them to the original capacity. The first order is to remove the vegetation, and the next is to remove gravel accumulation as soon as practicable. A proliferation of burrow-dwelling animals have further compromised some sections of the levee. These conditions need review by professional staff. Now, the historical channel maintenance. In previous meetings, it came to our attention that money was available through the Blue Ribbon Committee to improve the original Clover Creek Channel through Upper Lake. Some water still passes through this channel even during low flows. The improvement proposed is lowering the bed level to reduce groundwater levels within the town.
If you can come to a stopping point.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's three minutes.
My name is Tim Kiara. I live in Nice, and I will continue reading. This will protect street services, maintain dry subfloor areas, and provide an additional flood capacity. An additional need is to remove channel capacity, reducing vegetation, and return their traditional use of Clover Creek for hitch migration. This funding did not become available, but another round could be made available with the cooperation of Assemblymember Aguirre Curry's office and the Blue Ribbon Committee developed under her direction as supported by the proper funding levels required and justifications developed by the county. Gravel extraction contracts assisted in keeping the levee channel at original depths designed for maximum efficiency of flows within the levee, including natural hydrology clearing of sediment. When the gravel extraction ceased, sediment delivery began collecting in the channel. The collection of sediment in the levee channel, reducing flow volume, lack of channel vegetation mitigation, creating a natural dam, impeding flow, and lack of lake and stream bed alteration agreements permitting ongoing maintenance events significantly contributed to the Upper Lake flood in 1994 due to a levee breach. This flood resulted in homes and businesses being shut down due to five feet of standing water prohibiting habitability and commerce in Upper Lake. While Upper Lake is not new to flooding, the purpose of the Middle Creek Flood Control Project and Clover Creek Diversion Structure was to stop flooding of Upper Lake homes and businesses and supporting public health and safety of those citizens and businesses. The current condition of the Middle Creek Flood Control Project and Clover Creek Diversion Structure exhibit decades of neglect resulting in the following. The levee will not survive climate change events, including 100-year storm events. This is documented by the engineering company, firm in charge of the recent engineering study who attended the 2021 community events. Channel bank displacement and sediment delivery occurs after every rain event. The rain event in December 2021 resulted in approximately 50-foot-by-3-foot swath of the channel bank sloughing into the channel, a water quality violation, and hitch habitat alteration resulting in endangered species act of 1973 Section 9A G violations. Please see attached photos. Channel sediment collection, reducing channel capacity and catalyzing imminent flooding of Upper Lake via levee breach. The December 2021 rain event resulted in little to no freeboard of the levee. Eminent flooding and levee breaks that would result in unprecedented flooding in Upper Lake. The hydrology of the water alone due to a levee break will certainly result in catastrophic loss in longstanding high-water levels not seen in prior Upper Lake floods. The residents of Upper Lake are currently engaged with a seasoned PhD hydrologist to summarize document the impacts based on hydrology. Elevated impact due to climate change to the homes and businesses of Upper Lake with the potential of catastrophic community impact. Escalated fire danger due to three-to-five-feet-high weed grass fuel loads that are machinery mode in the highest fire season time of year. Thank you.
I have a, I'm going to go off on Robert Partita of Upper Lake, over 40 years of farming there, pay orchard. Anyways, I got pictures here. I've been flooded five times over 40 years because of the maintenance of that levee. I've been, I've been, it's a broken pit song. It just keeps on going and going. Nobody, everybody keeps pointing fingers that somebody else is responsible. I've had pictures here that y'all could see. I have equipment out there getting flooded, trailers, semis that go on the road. I'm going to have a fatality someday. I hope to God I don't, but you know what? It needs to be cleaned out. We pay taxes on levees to be cleaned out. They're under-maintained or not even maintained at all. When is something going to be done? We're tired of getting studies. Studies are not, not going anywhere. We're done. We need something to be done and done now because there isn't any water running down that creek. Now is the time to do it. The studies that people are saying, saying that they're going to be done and done and getting removal, that dirt and gravel is contaminated now. Nobody's going to want that gravel because there's so much debris, willows, blackberries, everything. And the lady in facture says that the banks getting eaten up, it's, actually, the bench is beginning eating up, eaten up because of the debris that's in the middle. The waterway is just blocked off completely. Yes, so the levee is going to break. I would foresee it within the next two years. And I mean, if you guys want nothing done, I don't know what else to say. I mean, we pay tax monies, $800 out of my pocket every year just for maintenance, and nothing's been done. My floodgates that are going underneath the levee from my property, the floodgates are under, submerged under the silt when they're supposed to be above so that the water will go out of my property, and it doesn't. It's actually, the water goes back in my property. Some people are already pumping their own water out of their residence into the creek because we're tired of getting flooded. There's no reason for our equipment to be flooded. Everybody says, "Put your equipment up above ground." Where? We can't use the levee for protection. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Partita. Vice Chair Scott?
If I could, I know we can't have a discussion here, but Lake County Water Resources is in the process of getting permits to be able to go into the creeks. So, again, they've, they've reported out at the Scotts Valley meeting. I have not posted our minutes from our last meeting, which Water Resources came and spoke to us about that. So, look again on our website in the next couple days, and you can review and see the work that's been done and then, and work with us. I can't, we can't go back and forth because it's public comment. I just wanted to put that information out to you.
True. Very, thank you very much. The reason is Sandy, my neighbor, has already sued the county for two years ago, and nothing's been done yet. You would think something would be done by now, but it hasn't.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else with public input? I'm looking online, and I'm not seeing anybody. So, I'll go ahead and close the public input portion of this item on the agenda. Thank you for bringing forward your issue, and we have the information here, and we'll look through it. And thank you, Vice Chair Scott, for giving them some guidance. All right. Next, we have, let's see, 9:07, Presentation of Proclamation Designating March 22, 2022 as National Agricultural Day. And I think Supervisor Scott's going to read this proclamation. I mean, I'm sorry, Pyska, I looked the wrong way. Yeah.
So, the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating March 22, 2022 as National Agriculture Day. Whereas, California is a leader, is a national leader in the farming industry with its production of over 400 different commodities and contributing to over $50 billion in high-quality food, fiber, and flour and products annually. Over a third of the country's vegetables and two-thirds of the country's fruits and nuts are grown in California. And whereas, Lake County has a long and rich agricultural history, starting in the 1850s when early settlers planted the first vineyards, followed in 1890 with the planting of the first Bartlett pears. Crops have flourished in our fertile valleys and hillsides. And whereas, today, Lake County's agricultural industry continues to be a vital economic engine, providing jobs and contributing to a strong tax base, bringing more than $75 million in value of its major crops of pears, wine grapes, and walnuts, as well as an increasing contribution of olives, nursery livestock, field, and seed crops and vegetable crops. And whereas, Lake County's farmers are stewards of the land, contributing to the health, beauty, productivity, and quality of our county's water, soil, air, and forest resources for the benefit of all California and Lake County residents. And whereas, Lake County's agriculture fosters a deep caring for the land, and our community contributes to the local economy, ensures the production of safe food, gives back to local charities and organizations, supports our way of life, and continues to embrace education and scientific knowledge for further agricultural advances. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate March 22, 2022 as National Agriculture Day in Lake County and celebrates the achievements of the more than 1 million people who work throughout the year in Lake County's and California's number-one industry, passed and adopted this 22nd day of March 2022. Okay, Sam's going to take it, sir. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you for the proclamation, and we appreciate the community support for agriculture, which, if you wear clothes and eat food, you are involved in agriculture. So, for the California Women for Agriculture, we appreciate this, and if you're interested, look us up online, and you too can become a member of California Women for Ag. Thank you.
Did you give your name?
No, she didn't.
I'm Sharon Zoller. I'm the current president of the California Women, state president of California Women for Ag.
I'm Terry Darrenic. I'm a member of the Lake County chapter and past president of California Women for Ag.
And we are very honored to have a Lake County resident be the president for the state, state chapter or state, the state organization.
Can we have you all stand up? Stand up on the...
Move this way.
All right. Thank you for that, Supervisor Pyska. Is there any other, is there anyone from public input that'd like to comment on this? No? Not seeing anyone on Zoom. I will move on to the next agenda item, 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designating March 22, 2022 as, oops, here we go again, as March for Meals Month, and this is item 6.4, not 6.3. And Supervisor Simon will read this.
Can we have anybody from the senior centers, please, come up?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Proclamation Designating the Month of March 2022 as March for Meals Month. Whereas, over 160,000 meals are provided annually to help homebound seniors in Lake County so they may live independently in their homes for as long as possible. And whereas, the 2022 observance of March for Meals celebrates 20 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital, critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas, the loyal volunteers who prepare the meals on wheels provide consistent and dependable meal delivery and daily wellness checks for the Lake County seniors in need. dependable meal delivery and daily wellness checks for the Lake County seniors in need. Whereas the senior centers and their program partners bring together the community, local businesses, and community organizations for the purposes of providing nutrition, hope, and independence to homebound seniors and those in need. And whereas COVID-19 remains a concern and continues to increase the demand for our senior center Meals on Wheels programs, and our senior centers have stepped up to the challenge and continue to provide the basic necessities to those who are deemed as some of the most vulnerable in our communities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby declare the month of March 2022 as March for Meals Month in Lake County and recognize the vital role of senior centers and community volunteers in addressing the needs and seniors of Lake County. Passed and adopted on the 22nd day of March 2022, signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. I just want to make one comment that, you know, and it was said in there, you know, how important this program is to all of our seniors in the county, especially through the COVID-19 crisis. Saw all the senior centers step up, was able to do that. I'm sorry we didn't get to do the March for Meals program that we do over the last couple of years, but I know that'll come back. But it's so critical. And it talked about the wellness checks. And really, when I know the drivers, I've gone out with them, I've delivered them. You sit and you talk with the seniors because our elders and our seniors in our program are so important and you learn the history in our areas. But just that few minutes of contact is just, it's a blessing. And it's a blessing for both the folks delivering and also the elders who are getting that time to share their story of who they are. So I can't thank you enough and tell you how important this is to everybody in the community because it affects all of us, like I said, with our elders. So all I can say is thank you very much. And please donate when you have time or do March for Meals. Or if you have a chance, go out and do one of these delivery services because it is, it's something to experience if you haven't done it. So thank you very much for everybody. Would you guys like to say anything? Anyone want to speak?
Is there any comments from the board? Anyone from the chambers? Not seeing anyone from the chambers, looking online, not seeing anyone online, and I'll bring it back to the board and close this item. And move on to the next. The next is our presentation. It's ours, 6.5, Presentation of Employee Service Awards. And so with that, we'll be presenting and honoring our employees who have served us for years. And we are going to start off, I'm going to give it to CEO Hutchinson and then the respective department heads, of course.
So I guess I'm kicking this off and it is my honor today to present an award to a very special employee of ours who I also know is somewhat shy in the spotlight. But Sarah Schukar, may I ask you to come up here to receive your 10-year award? So Sarah is really an outstanding employee in our administrative office and she's a true example of someone who has grown and developed in her capacity here with the county, beginning in our office as an office assistant trainee and working her way up at where she presently serves as an accountant. And she is highly accurate, dedicated, just a total breath of fresh air. So Sarah, we're so grateful to you that you have chosen Lake County as your employer of choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Director Metcalf.
This needs to be turned right side up. Oh, sure. I haven't done this before. All right, I needed a script.
Do you want me to whisper one?
No, it's fine. So we have two employees that are celebrating five years of service at Behavioral Health Services. Gina Hutchins, who is our behavioral health, what's her title? Behavioral Health Clinical Specialist. That's it. Congratulations, Gina. And Jolene Pryall, Office Assistant, also celebrating five years with Behavioral Health Services. And I think that was it.
Next is probation. Rob Howell, Director, Chief Probation Officer.
Okay, Pam, would you go ahead and give those awards for the probation office?
Yes.
One award?
We have Nicholas Yamamoto celebrating five years and Jeremy Pickens celebrating 10 years. Next, we have Public Health.
Is there a representative from Public Health Administration here today in Zoom or in person?
Okay. We have Jennifer Thorpe celebrating five years. Next up, we have Public Services, Director Lars Ewing.
Thanks to him. All right, so Kelly Gray is, Kelly, come on up. 20 years and it's actually 21 now, we're celebrating it. So Kelly is an absolute workhorse around here, not just here in the courthouse, but every, every county building, inside and out. I don't think you can go to any building and not see his handiwork. So he would much rather be out there doing that work than being up here. So I'll cut it short, but Kelly, thank you very much for your work and looking forward to more.
Next up is, next up is the Register of Voters.
So I'd like to introduce the five-year award to Lourdes Pantaleon, my Deputy Registrar of Voters.
Next up, we have the Sheriff's Department.
All right, good morning, Captain Jakowski, Captain Taylor. I'm the patrol commander. Captain Taylor's the jail commander. I'm going to read the names of our patrol deputies and then Captain Taylor's going to read the names of the correctional deputies. So we got Jose Martinez, newly promoted sergeant, 10 years. Have Gary Frase at 15 years. Richard Kreiser, who can I be here? He's at 15 years. Oh, you are here. Get on up, Richard. You can stand with the group now that you're retired.
Good morning. So here to recognize the deputies and staff that work within the jail facility. 15 years' worth of service, Deputy Matthew Gibson. And although he couldn't be here, William Tinkler with 25 years of service. Would also like to recognize two other staff members with five years of service each, Rebecca Moore and Christina Ty.
Next up, we have Social Services.
Good morning, Crystal Markatane. I'm the Director for Social Services and I am happy to present the following awards. First, we have Veronica Garcia, Eligibility Specialist Supervisor, five years. Heather Kriken, Social Worker Supervisor, CP Child Welfare, five years. Joy Long, Social Worker Four, Child Welfare, five years. Brian Parsons, Information System Analyst, two, five years. Andrea Ramirez, Eligibility Specialist, two, five years. Eunice Rivera, Eligibility Specialist, two, five years. Caitlin Sliger, Eligibility Specialist, three, five years. Christina Thomas, Social Worker One, five years. Mark Vahey, Social Worker Three, Child Welfare, five years. Betsy Wetmore, Staff Services Analyst, two, five years. David Rogers, Social Worker Three, 10 years. Melinda Bourgeois, Program Manager, 15 years. Stacy Saadi, Staff Services Analyst, two, 15 years. Jenny Billings, Public Authority Specialist, 15 years. Barbara Dwyer, Eligibility Specialist Supervisor, 20 years. And Betty Kukowicz, Employment and Training Worker, two, 20 years.
Next, we have Special Districts.
Good morning, everyone. Scott Harder is unable, was unable to be here today, so I will be reading his kind words for our employees. So first off, we have Lori Baca. Lori is the heart and soul of Special District's Administration Department. She's the glue that holds all of us together. She's our Customer Service Coordinator. If you have a question for Special Districts, Lori most likely has the answer. Lori always has a positive attitude and a smile on her face and it rubs off on the rest of the staff. She's also a very talented artist. I know that I can speak for everyone at Special Districts when I say Lori, we appreciate you and you'd be nearly impossible to replace. Thank you for five years of service. Second, we have Eric Una. Eric was one of our water and wastewater treatment plant operators down in Southeast. Eric always has an upbeat, Eric is always upbeat and brings a positive can-do attitude to each workday. He shows up early each day to tackle whatever jobs or tasks that he's assigned. He's always encouraging to other staff and the small efforts have a huge positive impact on the department. We're fortunate to have Eric in our department and I want to congratulate him on five years of service. Thank you.
And next, we have Public Works.
Yeah, I didn't bring my glasses. That's perfect, thank you. Good morning, Scott DeLeon, Public Works, Water Resources Director. My employee dislikes being here even more than yours. So he's on an excavator somewhere and for 15 years of service, like to recognize Jose Guiteras.
And just a few more five-year awards, if you'll bear with me a little bit longer. I neglected to mention that Matthew Rothstein, Deputy CAO in the administrative office, are also our PIO and our faithful Zoom pilot as we speak at this moment. Matthew Rothstein, five-year award. Thank you, Matthew. And where would we be if we didn't also recognize the incredible leadership sitting up here on the dais? Today, it is my honor to show my appreciation to Supervisor Simon for his five years of service. And also to Supervisor Scott. Thank you so much for a wonderful five years. So last but not least, we have a group of very lucky department heads, lucky because they're about to be recognized in ways they would prefer probably to remain anonymous, but nonetheless, here we go. And so we have a group of five department heads that are going to be recognized and the, three out of five of them illustrate that Lake County must be a pretty good place to work because three out of five of them came to Lake County for work, left for a short time, and came back, just couldn't stay away and are now are spending the rest of their careers with us, hopefully. And so I'll start with our first 10-year award recipient, Director Metcalf. Can you come on up? Thank you, Todd. We're just so pleased. Let me tell you a little bit about Todd. He actually, he actually worked for the county all the way back in 2003. He was the office manager for our old visitor information center over on the North Shore. He left county employment and later returned in 2012 when actually I hired him to be the program manager of adult services at the Department of Social Services. In 2016, Director Metcalf was promoted to the Director of Behavioral Health where he continues to serve today. Todd, congratulations. where he continues to serve today. Todd, congratulations on your 10-year anniversary.
I have to do something? No, thank you, Carol. I thank you for bringing me back to Lake County and had a great time at Social Services and having a lot of fun at Behavioral Health Services as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
See if we can do it another 10 years.
You say hats or awards?
Thank you.
And I just want to take a moment and compliment HR on the great photos that you did today. The background for these photos, they just really pop, so nicely done. So next up is a 15-year award recipient, and it goes to IT Director Shane French. He began his career with the county here in 2006. He was an IT tech. He moved his way up the career ladder very quickly, promoting to Deputy IT Director in 2008 and on to IT Director in 2010, where he now leads us in terms of our technological support and enhancements. Our world of technology has come so far in these years, thanks to Shane's dedicated leadership. Shane, I don't see you in the room. Perhaps you're with us in Zoom, but I want to thank you for your incredible service to these past 15 years. Wonderful picture of Shane and his family. Next up, another 15-year award recipient goes to our Special Districts Administrator Scott Harder, who we were advised a few minutes ago is not with us today. He's another department head that left us at one point but just couldn't stay away. He actually started his career with the county way back in 1996 as a Building Grading Inspector, promoting to Assistant Engineer in 1999, and on to Associate Civil Engineer in 2003. He left us in 2004, returning a decade later to serve as Deputy Special Districts Administrator. In 2020, our Board promoted him to the top position at Special Districts, where he now serves as Special Districts Administrator. We're so grateful to be Scott's employer of choice. Thanks for the 15 years and more. Our next award goes to our Sheriff, Coroner, OES Director, Brian Martin, who I believe is not available today, but Brian also has a great history with the county, where he left and came back, which is a wonderful thing for us. He first began with Lake County as a Deputy Sheriff in 2005, but he was on an obvious career path, promoting to Sergeant in 2007. He left us in 2008, only to return a year later, continuing his career path as Sergeant. In 2010, Brian Martin promoted to Lieutenant, but again left county employment in 2011, but not for very long. Returning in 2012, he served as our Assistant Chief Probation Officer. He ran for Sheriff, was elected, and began his career as our Chief Law Enforcement Officer, where he continues to serve in this capacity today. Sheriff Martin, what a great ride. Thanks for the 15 years and more. Ms. Grant, would you do me the honor of coming over here? She loves this, as you can tell. And last but certainly not least, a very special 30-year Years of Service Award to our Lake County Council, Ms. Anita Grant. Anita has served her entire career in the County Council's office, beginning as Deputy County Council One, promoting all the way up the career ladder to County Council, where she assumed leadership of the office in 2005. We are so fortunate Ms. Grant has made her career here in Lake County. Her support and service is invaluable. Thanks from all of us for your incredible 30 years.
Thank you.
And look at the picture, wow.
Well, thank you to all of our hardworking employees. We appreciate your service to Lake County.
I think with that, we'll take a five-minute break until 10 o'clock and go on from there. All right, looks like we already come back into session. Next, we're going to briefly take up Item 5.10.
Mr. Chair, we need to get our clerk back.
Oh, sorry. We do need a couple of seconds. Sorry. I'm sorry. We're going to briefly take up 5.10. Approved continuation of a local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus COVID-19 as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer. And Supervisor Sabatier, you wanted to pull this?
Yes, we had a conversation last month that this would come back every 30 days. There was a conversation that as long as the sheriff's emergency is continued, that reimbursement can occur, and at this moment, our local public health does not have any rules or regulations due to the pandemic at this moment in time, and everything can continue as is because of the sheriffs. And I wanted to have a discussion on whether or not we need to keep going the local public health emergency when it is no longer seen as a pandemic. It's seen more as an endemic, and it's no longer seen as a current emergency at this moment in time. This can come back to us anytime that there is a potential surge. I know that I did have a conversation with Director Portney about this because of some prior conversations I had, as well as the conversation we had here at the Board, who he then communicated with Dr. McLaughlin, and I'll let them speak on their own behalf, but I wanted to make sure and just allow for the discussion to occur.
All right, I see Dr. McLaughlin is on, so if you want to go ahead and unmute, and we'll wait to hear from you.
Yes, hello, and thank you, everybody. I'd like to thank the Board and the public for inviting me here just to speak a little bit today. It's always an honor. Speaking about the public health emergency, as Mr. Sabatier very appropriately noted, we don't feel that we are in a state of public health emergency anymore. I'm not sure who checks the CDC website as often as I do, but we are happily now in Lake County in the green tier. This is great news, and as Mr. Sabatier said, this is moving from... And I'm careful with the use of these words because currently there are a lot of scholars arguing about, is it pandemic? Is it widespread? Is it endemic? But we are moving out of what I would call the emergency phase and moving into a cautious phase. So I do not believe we need to continue the public health emergency orders. I'm incredibly proud of the people of Lake County for being able to get to this point. This was a long road. This was a lot of use of masking, a lot of people getting vaccines, a lot of people staying in, and sadly, we lost a lot of good people along the way. So I believe now is a good time to remove that public health emergency with the understanding that it is not a good time to let down our guard. This is not a good time to stop using your masks. This is not a good time to start, as I always joke to everybody, start licking guardrails in the public spaces. We want to still be vigilant. We want to be mindful because there are case counts rising in other parts of the world. So what happens in Europe doesn't always stay in Europe. I want to encourage our people to still be vigilant, use their masks when appropriately, but the public health emergency is faded, and I'm very happy to report that, and would like to celebrate. This is a huge win for everybody in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have a hand up, CEO Hutchinson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I wasn't expecting that we would be looking at lifting this today, and I just wanted to ask for an opportunity to confer with the disaster finance staff about lifting this emergency. I want to make sure that it doesn't impact any claiming issues. That would be problematic. I totally get what the doctor is saying about the state of the emergency from a health standpoint, but want to make sure we're covered on the finance side as well. I have put in a question to that staff, but don't have an answer quite yet. Hopefully, I will soon.
Okay, and so that would be something for next week?
No, I think it can be today.
It could be today, okay.
Yeah, I'm reaching out for that answer today.
All right, Supervisor Spieska.
Yeah, I just have a question on how that would relate to like the state vaccination van.
Yeah, I'm not sure about continuing the coverage of those services and costs. So I feel like we need to ask a few more questions.
Okay, great.
And unfortunately, you don't meet it until April 5th, so we can get these answers today, I think, for you.
Okay.
And I apologize, but on my understanding from our previous meeting, I thought that the reimbursements and stuff were all still available. At least that's what I thought that we were told when reviewing our videos. So getting clarification is perfect.
So in getting clarification, does that mean we still want to decide on this today? Or do you want to push this to later on the agenda, to wait for an answer?
Well, if it's really important to the supervisor, I can push for the answer today, or if you're willing to go a couple more weeks, we can have it on April 5th for sure.
Is that amenable also to Dr. McLaughlin, do you think? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it does make sense, and I really want to commend Ms. Hutchinson on her diligence. That's a very wise approach, and I would rather measure twice and cut once.
All right, looks like it's amenable. So when this comes back, we'll definitely have those answers, and we'll be able to conduct a dialogue about this. With that, do we just take action on continuing it then? Or actually, public input, right, first? So if there's anyone in the public that would like to come up to the microphone and speak, and I'm not seeing anybody come up, so I'm going to look onto Zoom. And I don't see anybody on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the Board for action. Supervisor Spieska.
And I would just make my request that there's no reason to rush the action if there can be, before the meeting is over, a communication from our Auditor Controller to let us know, then we would be able to take the action we want to take, rather than the action we're forced to take. And if we are about to close down the meeting and we have not had communication, then I'm perfectly fine with moving forward, but I think that we have the opportunity to give it time to get a response.
So you wanted to... I can move this further? Okay.
And that's just my opinion.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay, let's do that.
No, I agree with that.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll bring it back and pull... We'll not pull it, but keep it on the open items or not open, but we will come back to it later.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to our 6.6. Hearing on account and proposed assessment for 11450 East State Highway 20, Clear Lake Oaks. And it looks like we have code enforcement here, and I think once they come up, we are going to need to swear them in, and anyone else that's involved with this item needs to be sworn in as well for testimony.
Hey, Bruno, why don't you wait and see if your microphone reaches you so you don't have to go back and forth with the other one? I think the cord's pretty long. Oh, maybe not? No. Oh, was it hot?
I don't want to pull anymore.
The podium microphone, though, will reach... Well, it'll reach to where the gentleman is standing, but not much further than that.
If it was a video game, you would. Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone. If you're in Zoom... One second. If you're in Zoom for this item on the agenda, can you please raise your hand or put the camera on so that we can recognize if you're calling in or attending? And if not, we'll...
Okay, so I'm going to do the swearing. So with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you for swearing in, gentlemen. And with that, we'll go ahead and give the floor to you, Manager Beltramo.
All right, good morning. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division within the Community Development Department, and today we come before the Board. Upon completion of an abatement, we are to give an account and a proposed assessment for that abatement for the Board to review. So in this case, the property here is 11450 East Highway 20, Clear Lake Oaks, California. And as we always do, we like to give an overview of the property and the particulars and the property owner. So the property owner here is John Diller Ryan Trust, dated May 11, 2017. The property, again, is located in Clear Lake Oaks. I do want to go a little further with the explanation of the property. It sits right on Highway 20, and it is directly across from Clear Lake. It is a single-family residential dwelling. There are some additional structures on the property. So on December 10, 2021, we determined the property was in violation, and we determined it was in violation of several public nuisance codes and the Chapter 21 zoning ordinance. So we cited it for violations of existence of garbage and rubbish, items that cause an unsightly appearance, which is visible from the public rideaway or provides harborage for rats and other vermin, abandoned, dismantled, wrecked, or inoperable vehicles or parts thereof, and violation of the Open and Outdoor Storage Ordinance. We also issued, as our practice is, anytime we take personal property, which involved with this property, there was trash and rubbish, but there was also items that could be considered personal items, we issued a second notice on January 21, 2022. And just so you have a better understanding of what we saw out there, these are photos from December 6, 2021. As you can see, it is an unsightly scene. Junk, rubbish scattered all over the property. In the back, you could see a wrecked vehicle. Just another view. So this is... This abatement's not what I would consider a routine abatement. There were some extenuating circumstances, and there were two components to this abatement. So on February 7, 2022, as I was driving by the property, I noticed that the property had become worse. The condition of the property had deteriorated to a state where basically trash was flowing from the property almost onto the highway. And I also observed new additional inoperable vehicles on the property. So as I train all my officers, anything that shocks our conscience, we're to stop, and we're to assess the situation, document it, and especially anything on the highway. That's a sensitive area. We protect the highway. Anything around the lake, everything from the lake out, that's a priority. So I stopped my vehicle. I got out. There were several individuals on the property. None of them seemed to have any permission or consent to be there, had anything relationship to the property, such as being a tenant or an occupant. They appeared to be dumping at the time I was there. So at that point, I was lucky. I said... So at that point, I was lucky, I said, we need to kind of move forward here. This can't, we, it was my belief that the situations would persist, would continue to deteriorate and become worse. There would be more items dumped on the property, more vehicles dumped on the property. At that point, I've got in touch with the property, I guess it was the caretaker for the property, who put me in touch with the nurse, who put me in touch with the trustee for the John Ryan estate. At that time, I learned that Mr. Ryan was in a state of dementia or amnesia where he could not care for his affairs. The trustee informed me that the property, they could no longer care for it, it was going into foreclosure, they were not going to clean it up. So we, right now, we're in the middle of the second notice. I believe it was issued on January 21st, has a 30-day correction period, so February 21st would have been the date when we could, that second notice would expire. Based on the worsening condition of the property, I decided that we could not wait any longer and that these issues could not persist. Citizens were complaining, again, the trash, as one citizen explained to me, the property was throwing up on the highway. Sheriff's Office also had an interest in this property and there was individuals staying on the property that were of concern and did not have permission or consent per the trustee or the other individuals I spoke with. At that time, I requested a summary abatement. I was granted the summary abatement and we moved forward. So there's two components here, a summary abatement and a full abatement. The summary abatement is only for those issues that cause an immediate health or safety risk to the general welfare of the public or the community. So these are the photos that we saw on February 7th, to give you an idea. That is a pile of trash exposed to the elements. It's substantial and it was not there when we first cited the property or was not as the size it was when we first cited the property. Here's some pictures, additional pictures, so you get a full understanding. As you can see in the background, it is in close proximity to Clear Lake. And again, this is just continued garbage, trash, rubbish on the property that posed a health or environmental issue. We moved forward with the summary abatement and we were granted approval, we went forward and we abated the immediate health and safety issues, which was basically that large trash, pile of trash. And there was an additional pile of trash on the other side of the property. As you can see, here's our contractor removing that pile of trash and rubbish. And that's the after photo. We'll get into the numbers later. The numbers are staggering and they're significant. This is the completed photo of the summary abatement. This is the pile of trash existing on the other side of the property. The property, I don't have a measurement for me, but it was fairly, it was sizable. It was a narrow property, a strip property, so there's two sides to it. This here, as you can see, is garbage that's bagged up, but the bags were ripping and tearing apart, allowing the trash to flow out. Obviously, a concern here is it's in February. If it rains, rain, water will come down, wash it out. And as you can see in the background, again, that's the highway on the background, which that, if, if anything flows out there, that could pose an issue and then obviously, or ultimately flowing into the, into Clear Lake. Just another photo of this, the pile of trash, as you can see, it's substantial. And there's the after photo. So I'm just going to rehash what this slide says here. I got with the trustee for the property, after the summary abatement was completed, again, we couldn't allow the issues to persist. People were just going to be dumping on the property, dumping their vehicles on the property. It was just going to get worse. They were extenuating, I guess, exigent circumstances that led me to this determination. I got with the trustee, discussed the situation with him, learned what the status of the property was. He signed a right-of-entry form acknowledging that the cost of the abatement will be a lien on the property and gave us the go-ahead to move forward as he nor his, the property owner were going to be willing or able to cure these issues. On February 17th, we did the full abatement. And I want to emphasize on the full abatement that we removed 33,669 pounds of debris and metal from the property. We also towed four inoperable vehicles from the property, two that were stuffed full of trash and rubbish. This gives you a fuller understanding of the extent of the issues persisting on the These are the vehicles that we towed from the property. As you can see, the one on the left is in close proximity to the highway. Again, it was inoperable and wrecked, stuffed with garbage and trash. I don't believe the vehicle on the left was there when we first cited the property. This was something that was dumped additionally later that led me to my determination we had to move forward. Here's another vehicle on the property, the one on the left was completely full of garbage and rubbish. And here's some just additional photos of the property. As you can see, it was in a bad condition and again, I do want to reiterate, we did give them a first notice that the 30 days had expired. That's the minimum statutory requirement before we can proceed with an abatement. Our policy is two notices prior to removing anything that may be deemed personal property, just so we give ample opportunity and notification for those people that may want that property to remove it. On the right, you will see the completed photos of the full abatement. Now, this is the backside of the house. A lot of people can't see it, but there are neighboring properties surrounding that could see it. Again, the property was completely surrounded and engulfed with trash, rubbish, garbage, and storage issues. So the way we, we chose to handle this is we chose to kind of parcel it out, the summary abatement and the full abatement, so all the costs can be attributed to either one. The cost of the summary abatement was $2,074.54. The cost of the full abatement was $9,218.70. And then for our tow contractor, it was additional $1,250. The administrative cost for the summary abatement was $601.46. The administrative cost for the full abatement was $829.60. The total for both abatements is $13,974.30. I just want to kind of reiterate, the summary abatement, we pulled approximately 3,000, I'm pretty sure it's 11,000, it's in one of the slides. Officer Valdez believes that 11,000 pounds of trash and rubbish and garbage removed from the summary abatement. So 11,000 plus the 33,000 that we took off with the full abatement, so we're looking about approximately 45,000 pounds of garbage, rubbish, and storage materials or unsightly materials that we removed from this property. At this time, staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors confirm the assessment and the amount of $13,974.30. Direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. After recordation, it should be delivered to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as a special assessment. Again, the cost of the abatement services are $12,543.24. That's a total amount of the summary and the full abatement. The administrative costs amounted to $1,431.60. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Marcus. Vice Chair Scott?
Just want to thank you for jumping on these. I love that these are coming to us every week, cleaning up these properties, it's definitely needed. I think this goes to show that people definitely need to be getting a receipt if you're hiring somebody to go to the dump. You need to get a receipt to prove that the garbage is going into the proper place. And I think this might be a discussion that we need to have, to have some sort of community outreach to inform the public on, this is where your garbage may be going. You might be thinking you're paying somebody to go to the dump to clean up your property, but, but obviously, this garbage didn't just come from that, you know, the people living on that property. It was brought in. So I think we, as a county, need to do a better job of informing our public on different things they can do to protect themselves and to protect our environment. So thank you again for bringing this to us.
That's definitely been the case in a couple other situations that I've witnessed where they thought they paid someone to take the garbage somewhere and they just dumped it. I had a question, Manager Beltramo, about, and I think it was in the presentation, but I want to make sure just to reiterate, the person that, the owner, you said had dementia?
That, that was what the trustee conveyed to me, had some health issues, dementia, amnesia, where he could not care for himself or his affairs or his estate. And the trustee was taking control of that or had taken control of it.
And so is he on site or was there squatters that came and done this or?
So the responsible people for this, I did, again, I did have encounters with them. Nobody there had permission or consent to stay there. The people that were on the property at the time that I saw them and the people that had been living on the property in a trailer, they had actually moved a trailer onto the property and were living on the property. Per the property caretaker, he said they were the responsible parties, they were the ones that trashed up the property. And then again, people had come and were just started to dump their garbage on the property.
With those apparently caretakers' consent, basically, or?
No, the caretaker did not give consent. Apparently, the caretaker was not strong enough to remove them from the property.
Oh, I see.
He did not go through the proper steps of filing a trespass complaint. When I got on the property, I informed him that he needs to file a trespass complaint to remove them. I do want to also add an additional note, we worked this abatement in connection with the sheriff's office. I guess this is an example of what the roadmap task force, I know it hasn't got fully unveiled and fully going, but this is an example of when the sheriff's office and code enforcement works together, these are the problems that we can solve. And I don't think without the sheriff's assistance and encouraging those people on the property to remove themselves from the property, we would not be able to get it to the state it is today. My concern going forward is that people will now know that this property is vacant and may seize upon it again. This is a, an issue we deal with on a daily basis. As soon as they're aware of a property of being abandoned, they will move in, try to live in the property, and then ultimately, they will have trash and junk issues. And that's a common issue in the code enforcement world.
I see. Supervisor Spieska?
I, I think that any home that is left vacant is possible to that kind of vagrancy if the homeowner doesn't take responsibility and, and I, I mean no offense, but I'm going to correct some of the words that you said, that the responsible party is the landowner, the homeowner. The people who are doing the trash, they're, that's just a criminal activity. They might be responsible for the trash, but the people responsible for keeping the community clean and safe are the homeowners who need to protect their properties, make sure their properties are clean, make sure the people that are there are people that should be there. And, and not taking those actions tells me that they did not take on that responsibility. I, I'm going to make a comment and I know where we are in CDD with this, but it's just important for me to make the mention. It was mentioned to the, not the trustee, but the person standing in representing the trustee, that this needed to be done and they said, well, you can go ahead and do it. And I think that's a problem. And I think that problem exists because there's no fines involved with that. We worked really hard to update our administrative fines and we're not pushing any buttons by saying, hey, it's going to cost you this much more. Instead, we're doing the work for them, which in my opinion is a waste of staff time because now we're taking the responsibility of that homeowner instead of saying, hey, it's going to be $500 a day, hey, it's going to be $1,000 a day if you don't take action. And by not having that to kind of put people in a bind to actually take action on their own and take responsibility, we're going to end up having to do the work that homeowners should be doing on their own. So I'm looking forward to when we get those administrative fines done because that type of conversation to me is the type of conversation that should never happen where they say, no, it's good, you can go ahead and handle it for me. That should never happen. If they do that, they should be fined to the maximum amount because they're actually kind of thumbing their nose at us and saying, you could take care of my, my responsibility. And so I hope that we can implement these fines ASAP because I have not seen one of these presentations yet that has the penalties that we've agreed upon. They've just been paying for the hours that our staff time has been put into this. But I think it's important to give the incentive to do the right thing for property owners and that incentive is not going to come until they see that there's an actual cost analysis of the situation and say, I'm going to lose a whole lot more if I don't take action. And so I, I'm really hoping that we can get to that sooner than later.
Ms. Grant?
I, I just wanted to make note that Tom Carivo is a professional fiduciary, so his role as a trustee is a professional one. He's not just a family friend or someone who wandered onto the property, but of course, his role does have limits in terms of what he can do and what he cannot do on behalf of his client, who in this case has apparently serious cognitive issues. So this may be a somewhat distinct example of what you're talking about, given these circumstances.
Thank you. That's where my line of questioning was coming to, I was leading to, was that either trustee, owner, or even the apparent caretaker, there still has to be something that is incurred and I think, like you mentioned, the administrative fines would help with that because giving them some sort of accountability helps. Because I was thinking about it with other people that have these situations with garbage on their properties and it seems as if there's a mindset, and I think it was mentioned before, that, well, go ahead because it'll just kind of be something that can be taken care of when I sell the place or whatever the case may be. So just that, that was where I was going with that. Is there any other comments or? Supervisor Spieska?
Thank you very much for the report, Marcus. But you made a comment too, that this property potentially would be a foreclosure or something? Was it going back to the bank? Was the trustee saying that?
The trustee informed me that the estate had basically exhausted majority of its funds and the remaining funds needed to go for the care of the property owner and that they were going, and that the property was going to be foreclosed on or they were going to let it go to foreclosure.
Okay. You know, once we do abatements and we, and we find out that it may be going over into foreclosure into the bank, is there any contact or attempt to contact the bank? Because ultimately, if it takes a year to sell, you know, and it's under bank control, it's going to be a little different situation, obviously, for you guys. If, if the problem happens again, then you're going to be dealing with the banking organization. So I don't know, that may complicate things, but you know, we have fire season coming up, you know, and those types of things with banks, bank-owned, I know they're not going out cleaning the property. So just had a question on that follow-up.
So I'm very familiar with foreclosures. It's not, it's till the bank files the paperwork and initiates that process, starting with the trustee sale and the, with that process. They really don't have any ownership or responsibility for the property, still the property owner's responsibility. Ideally, you know, a lot, there have been situations in the past where we've been privy to the fact that the bank has taken possession. Banks do not want those assets on their book, they want to take over the property, clean it up and get rid of it and try to recoup as much money as they can. And those situations, we work with the lenders and tell them to go ahead and clean it up. And again, I do want to emphasize, part of my job and part of a code enforcement's job is to not use taxpayer funds, to not use county monies, to make the individuals responsible for the problems cure using their own money. So whenever code enforcement steps in, we step in as a last resort and as a safety net and only in those spec, extenuating or exigent circumstances, which I believe are present here in this situation. My one concern and I'm, maybe Counselor Grant can chime in on this, is if we do a lien and there is a foreclosure, how, how does the foreclosure affect the lien? And maybe that's something that we need some education on.
Ms. Grant?
Well, the bank's going to be interested in getting its money out of this, but it's all the more reason to make sure that the lien gets on the property before there is a foreclosure. Because if that action is ongoing, that can complicate matters considerably. So if the board acts today and the department can move with alacrity to get the lien against the property, then the county has a legal interest in having this, this paid off. So.
Supervisor Spieska?
And where are we with the property taxes on this?
I didn't, Joey, do you have any information on that?
Property taxes are paid.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that has any comments on this? And if so, I think there would need to be another swearing, right? Not seeing anybody in the public or on Zoom. So we'll bring it back to the board for action. And what I'll do is I'll pass the gavel to Vice Chair Scott, and I'll make the motion.
Looking for a motion? Looking for a motion?
Ms. Chair, I move to confirm the assessment of $13,974.30 and direct staff to record a notice of special assessment lien against the property. Cost of summary abatement services was 2,074.54 cents. Leonard's hauling and $601.46 administrative fees totaling to be $2,676. The cost of abatement services was $9,218.70 Leonard's hauling, plus $1,250 Jones towing, plus $829.60 administrative fees totaling $11,360.52. The total cost of abatement on the property taxes was 2,676, plus $11,360.52 totaling $13,974.30. I don't know if I had to read all that, but it was in the recommended action.
Second.
Great, I have a motion and a second. Johanna, if you could please call roll.
Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes, and I'll pass the gavel back.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your presentation and for your work on this. And, uh, very appreciated, not only here, but also, I know for sure, in the community.
Board is ready for, to discuss 7.2.
Thank you.
Either way, either way.
With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. I'm thinking we probably don't have any input from the committee yet, so we'll go on to item 7.2.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll go on to item 7.2, and this item is, let's see, consideration of recruitment strategy for county administrative officer. And with this, I think is Pam?
Pam is in Zoom.
Okay, Pam?
Good morning, Board. My name is Pam Samick. I'm the Director of HR. Today, I'd like to recommend a plan for the CAO recruitment. I would recommend that HR open an open recruitment by 3:25, as open until filled, with the first review at 15 to 20 days, which means first round interviews of qualified applicants would take place the end of April or the first week of May. Concurrently, while we're doing that, I would recommend that HR and admin prepare an RFP for a headhunter, if that is needed, to recruit for this position. Given the time needed to recruit for the COA position, I would recommend that we open a promotional recruitment for interim CAO and run it for five days, and hold interviews for interim CAO the week of April 4th. If the internal candidate is appointed, this would allow the internal candidate three weeks with the outgoing CAO for a thorough download and some basic training. I'm asking for an estimated budget of $3,500 for advertising and recruitment costs. We will advertise on the normal boards that we advertise, and some additional sites to help get our recruitment out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Did, uh, did you have anything to add to this at all, CEO Hutchinson, no?
No.
Anything from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I like the idea of putting it out there for the interim. I really like the idea of doing an RFP, so we can find a different headhunting, that sounds kind of an awkward term, but to find and recruit for such a specific type of position. So I think that I prefer doing it that way than if we open it up and fly the position, when I say internally, I mean by HR, just putting, flying the position and until filled, that, to me, that means we're going to hold on to applications a whole lot longer while we're using our recruiting team that we make contract with. And I think that we have to have a far reach in order to ensure that as a board, we're choosing the best of the best that come to us, rather than just those that happen to visit our website or know that there is a change happening. So that, that would be my suggestion, is headhunter for the permanent and flying the position for the interim. I, I like that idea.
Well, by flying the position at the same time, who knows? We could get an excellent candidate. I mean, we did, we were able to recruit the Director of Health, and he came in through our website and means. So this wouldn't preclude you from doing the headhunter, we would do it in conjunction with and see what we get. And, you know, at the 15 to 20 days, we look at the qualified candidates. If there isn't a qualified candidate, in the meantime, we also are doing the RFP and working with a headhunter.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, I, I just think the timelines need to be coordinated, rather than flying now, going through the RFP process, and then flying it again separately. It just, if, if we can coordinate it and do both at the same timeframes, then I'm okay with that. But having two separate timelines where some are going to have to wait while others don't, it's just a, I, I just want to make sure that we don't lose our good candidates by making them feel like this is a very long, drawn-out process. And I think that having that greater reach is what I'm looking for, for candidate pools.
Supervisor Simon, you had yours up first, and then?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate, you know, the proposals we move forward. You know, first of all, I just want to say to our CAO, our outgoing CAO, Carol, there's going to be big shoes to fill. I want to thank you for your service. I know you gave out service awards today, but greatly appreciate and honored to serve with you over the past five years. Retirement, obviously, is well-deserved, and I know you've made that decision, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you've done for Lake County, and it's going to be a challenge, as we are always challenged, it seems like every fire season or disaster year as we move forward. But filling the shoes of the CAO is going to be a monumental task for this board. With that, you know, I do like the opportunity in, in the presentation that was made by our Human Resource Director, and I would like to support her on that. I'm fine with the timelines as she rolled out, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Vice Chair Scott?
Actually, Pyska.
Okay. Supervisor Pyska, sorry.
Yeah, I also, I agree with Director Samick's strategy as well. I, I think it gives us an opportunity. If we find someone right away, I will know. I think you'll know right away if we have a good candidate, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Vice Chair Scott?
Just want to echo everything that Supervisor Simon said about our CAO. I definitely agree with everything that was said. You've done an amazing job, and it was a pleasure to work with you the last five years. And I think time is of the essence here. We need to move fast. Just because we have an RFP out, looking for a headhunter, doesn't mean that if we find the perfect candidate, we can't jump on that. And I think we need to make sure we're moving forward.
Thank you for that. I'm in, I think the recommendation is, I think it is acceptable, and I do agree, though, if it works with the timeline, the way Supervisor Sabatier stated it, if it works that way, I'm on board with it as well. And so it looks like, uh, looks like the direction's kind of in consensus, pretty, pretty much. But we'll go ahead and open up for public input. There's no other statements or comments from the board.
Would you like Pam to review, so we're sure she understands the direction?
Yes, and I'll bring it back here to the board, since there's no public input either way, and so we'll let Pam go ahead and review that.
So we're going to open a recruitment for the CAO, open until filled with first review, 15 to 20 days. Concurrently, we'll be doing an RFP for a headhunter or recruiting service to help us with the recruitment. In addition, we'll be opening, opening up a promotional for interim CAO, and then conducting interviews the week of April 4th for the interim position. And a recommended budget for advertising of this phase of around $3,500.
And just to clarify, Pam, there's no need for additional appropriation for that budget. It's a matter of moving some funds within the Administrative Office Budget Unit 1012.
Correct.
And so, Ms. Samick, I have a question. If, if once you put that first notification out, and there is a recruitment that's done without the headhunter, would we still be able to interview that person or those, a series of people? What if there's a group of people that went in with the initial?
Absolutely. So when I say first review, that means we will cut it off at 15 to 20 days and look at the applicants that we have, qualify their skill sets, and if they meet the minimum qualifications, we would schedule interviews with the board.
And then if, and then if that's not basically successful, the headhunter should be acquired or decided by then to go further?
Hopefully. I know I was, you know, looking at some services to help with some other bigger recruitments, and I've gotten messages back from headhunters saying they're too busy. So, you know, hopefully, within that 20-day period, we'll, we'll acquire a company to do so.
And we would anticipate that your board, we would, we would agendize that agreement for your board to approve, so you know what, what the headhunter, headhunter strategy is.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I apologize if I missed that in the revision provided to us by Ms. Samick. Did I hear anything about the interim?
Yes.
And can you repeat that?
So I will be immediately opening up a promotional recruitment for interim CAO, and then we will run it for five days, and then schedule interviews for the week of April 4th with the board for the interim.
Okay. Sorry for missing that, I got distracted by my own thoughts.
All right. With that, I think, do we, we need to put this in motion? Ms. Grant? Yes. So with that, I think we'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I move to approve the recruitment strategy provided to us by Director Samick.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Samick, very much for that, for that presentation and discussion.
Thank you for your time.
And so, let's see, 5.10 probably isn't ready yet.
I do have an update for you, Mr. Chair. I have conferred with the Auditor Controller, who has requested time to make sure we have the right answer to that question, if lifting the local health emergency for COVID would have a impact on our ability to claim. And so she is requesting that we carry that item over to the, to April 5th, and that will give her the opportunity to provide us with that answer. And so if that's agreeable to you, we would just put it on April 5th as an untimed item, and so it can be discussed.
Vice Chair Scott?
So with that, I have a question about, I know we have to have these proclamations every 30 days. Would we have to then ratify this today to be able to move forward, to continue that?
Yes.
And so, just, just for record, I'm open, I'm opening up 5.10 again, bringing it back, so that that way the public knows what we're talking about. I mean, we have talked about it, but, so this is to approve the continuation of local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer. And so I know we just had the update, we had somewhat of a discussion, I'll open it up for public input one more time. Not hearing anyone or seeing anyone on Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the continuation of local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so I think that brings us to our 7.1 calendars.
We also have the extra item, too.
Oh, thank you. Actually, we don't, we're not going to do the calendars, we're going to go to that. We're going to go to item 4.1, and that's consideration of nomination of Supervisor Pyska to serve on the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission.
So, Mr. Chair, I prepared this agenda item for Supervisor Pyska, but she is probably more fluent in terms of speaking to exactly what it is, but it looks like an exciting opportunity for Lake County to have representation on a nationwide group that is going to focus on the impacts of wildfire.
Yeah. So I'm preparing my application. It's due Friday. It's about a 10 to 12-hour commitment a month for about a year and a half. So we'll see.
And, Mr. Chair, we also reached out to Congressman Thompson on behalf of Supervisor Pyska, and asked if he would consider preparing a letter of recommendation that, that she be appointed to this commission, and, and he's agreed to do so. So hopefully, that will heighten her chances of being selected. I would guess that there are going to be a lot of folks wanting to be a part of this.
Yeah. So it's, um, developing the policy, the policies for, you know, how communities can live with wildfire and recover from wildfire. So it's just a new committee that was created in partnership with FEMA.
With your work on Lake County Risk Reduction and just empirical knowledge, it's a good choice, so.
Yeah, I don't know how I got the invitation, it just appeared. We'll see.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I thought it's perfect as well, being on the RRA and being dedicated to mitigating our fire issues in our communities, that Supervisor Pyska be, offered the ability to apply for this position. What I'd like to know is, in the future, hopefully, you do get the position. I know that Supervisor Simon is also, I believe, still on a fire state committee.
State Board of Fire Services?
Exactly. And I'd love to hear how those two things can coordinate together, complement one another for what's coming back to our community. I haven't heard much about what's happening at the Fire State Board Committee. Love to learn more about what's happening there, and maybe also understand a little bit better how this committee can help us as well from Supervisor Pyska. So in the future, not now.
This is through the Department of Agriculture and U.S. Forestry in partnership with FEMA, so I'll be happy to if I, if I can get it.
Yeah, and this is a federal appointment?
Awesome. That means we're at the state level, we're at the federal level, and obviously, at the local level. And so I, I think that's, thank you very much.
All right. Vice Chair Scott?
Definitely support this application. If anybody deserves a seat on this committee, it's Lake County, so.
That's what I'm trying to sell, yeah.
All right. Sitting in for the public that would like to comment on this extra item? Not seeing anyone on Zoom, raise their hand. So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the nomination of Supervisor Pyska to serve on the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission, and wish her the best of luck to be approved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now it looks like we can go to our calendars, and we'll start off with Supervisor Pyska.
So tomorrow morning, I have the ARPA meeting, and then I'm meeting at the Cobb Resource Hub in the afternoon. And Thursday, we have our committee meeting with the Ag Commissioner, and that's during the Hope Rising meeting, though.
Yeah, I won't be able to.
Okay. I have a press conference with Congressman Thompson here at the courthouse. And then I, this is the same group that I was invited to make the application for, it's the Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force, but I think this is the, some of the state representatives. And this is with Commissioner Crowfoot, and that is in the afternoon. I'm going to have to miss the Geothermal Advisory Committee, but I think Supervisor Simon will be able to pick that up. And then Friday, the Home Hardening Meeting. be able to pick that up. And then Friday, the Home Hardening Meeting. I have a Celebration of Life I'm going to try to attend in the afternoon, but I'm not sure if I'm going to make it. It's in the Bay Area. And then Monday, we have our Workforce Alliance Board Meeting, rescheduled. Didn't have a quorum last week. So are you going to make that in person?
Yep.
I think I am, too. Nothing on Tuesday. Vazona Benefit Meeting on the 30th with the Riviera HOAs and getting that, and Code Enforcement, getting that underway. I have a meeting at constituent that Thursday morning, the 31st. Friday, another Home Hardening Meeting. April 3rd, Sunday, is the Fiddler's Jam. If anyone wants to get out and make it, I'm going to be at a mountain bike race, so I won't make that. And then February 4th, back here with my meeting with Carol, and it sounds like we may have interviews that day, or starting that week.
I think board interview would occur on the 5th.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes. So last week had a few things happen, so I think I should at least explain to the board. We took part in January with a dual meeting with the City of Lakeport to approve our tax sharing agreement. And eventually, as of last Wednesday, it went to LAFCO for review and public comment and the public hearing portion. There was a protest that was submitted, and all it takes is one protest submission to, to activate the board's ability to offer it up for a protest vote. It got a little confusing in the explanation of how the protest vote happens, so I hope that I'm going to provide this clearly. There are two separate brackets. 20, you have the registered voters and you have the property owners. And in a protest vote, all it is, is do we bring it to an election? That's the question. It's not, do we do this or do we not do this? And in the protest vote, if 25% of the registered voters, which I believe it's only 18 registered voters out there, or 25% of the 50 property owners say, yes, we want to bring this to an election, which would be their protest vote, then at that point, we would have an election that only the registered voters would be able to vote in. State law, not our law, not our local LAFCO chapter law. It's, we are following exactly the guidance that's given to us from the state. Again, because of that protest vote, there is also a caveat that the LAFCO Commission has the ability to pull properties out of an annexation and also has the ability to add properties into the annexation. And that discussion came up, and then we were put on hold as our attorney for LAFCO was not very clear on whether or not we can pull properties or add properties after the fact of a protest vote. And so we are going to be meeting again on March 30th next week in order to see if we can move forward on that, or there's the potential that we pull the property off, but then have to recycle the public hearing, re-notify the public, and, and start again in that same process that we just took on the 16th. So it's not starting the whole process over, but it has the potential to at least reopen up the public hearing portion. So it got complicated and complex, and we'll see if we can get some conclusion or at least clarification on the 30th. And I'll, that, that was a long, for last week, so I'll skip everything else that I did. Today, I will be on the phone with the CPUC based on our PG&E rate increases. Please submit your public comments. Let them know how this affects you. This is, this is an important one. We're hearing about PG&E bills already increasing. That does not take part of the 7% that they're currently talking about increasing again on top of everything else. Their claim is because of all the vegetation work that they are doing and for all the safety measures that, in my opinion, they should have been doing all along, that now we're seeing an increase because they're actually doing the work. So I, I think that, I, I would like to see better than just continuously asking us for more when it's, they're already asking quite a bit. On Wednesday, mostly clear, other than I will be taking part in the Lake County Fire Protection District Meeting as well as the Conacta Unified School District Meeting. Thursday is also mostly clear, other than a CSAC check-in. And then on Friday, I will be taking part. I believe that Supervisor Crandall has asked me to be taking part in the Golden State.
Connect.
Connect for the, for the broadband RCRC conversations that are happening. So I will be happily doing that on Friday. And then the following week, we do not have a meeting. So at this moment in time, it's fairly open. All, all next week is fairly open at this moment in time. There is a RCRC Legislative Quick Fire, or Quick Round Fire, or whatever it's called. Appreciate those, just to keep up on, on everything that's happening. There is a bill also that I'm starting to track. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's to increase the fines on illegal dumping and to add on a lot of other penalties included. Some people would like to think that our county is unique in the sense of what we're dealing with, with illegal dumping. It's happening everywhere. There is just an issue with solid waste management that people are just not getting on board and taking advantage of because there are, there's not enough teeth in the rules to be able to make change. And so definitely keeping track of that. On the 30th, also we'll have that LAFCO meeting. I probably should put that on my calendar before it fills up. And then again, starting over on the following of April to get ready for our meeting on the 5th. Do want to say that I'm thankful that Supervisor Crandall and myself happened to be around in the courthouse, and we were able to get a last-minute invitation to go to the new swearing-in of our deputies, both for correctional and for patrols. Seems the sheriff's team with the new increases and the healthcare package has made a huge difference in making recruiting happen over there. And it's nice to see so many new faces coming in and those positions getting filled. I know that's been important to all of us, to hear about the outcomes of all those changes that we've made. So that, that's it for my report.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just want to report on the Risk Reduction Authority Meeting. We had our monthly meeting yesterday. I think a very important milestone and step has been taken place. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is currently with our fire chiefs at this point, and then we're going to be coordinating with administration and ourselves to figure out, you know, the next steps with getting it out to the public comments. We can move forward with it. It's, it's been a long time coming. It is a large document, but the next step will be getting the public comments. We can get it finalized and get it moving forward. It was first created in 2009. I know it's been 13 years, but now it's updated. It'll be updated every five years. Make sure it's on our calendar and administration, making sure that it's being carried forward. So that was a heavy lift, but a very important document and a roadmap as we move forward with the grants and opportunities for all districts here in Lake County, from the county, the cities, tribal governments, firewise communities, fire safe, everything that's happening in Lake County. So that is good news, but still work to be done. The last time it was updated, we didn't have any municipal advisory committees here in the county. Now that's going to add a different aspect, a little more interaction. But this is, you know, a big milestone and a big step. So I want to thank RCD, you know, Lake County, everybody who participates in the Risk Reduction Authority, but the contracted individuals that have worked really hard to get this completed. Obviously, today's meeting, we'll finish whenever we do. I did have a canceled CDD Committee Meeting on there. Do we have one tomorrow?
We disbanded the CDD Committee, so that's probably why you see this canceled.
Yeah, all right. And then Thursday, as said, the Geothermal Advisory Committee, I will be attending that. I mean, also, if it doesn't overlap, there is another meeting I may try and attend for the Hidden Valley Community Services District, but that'll depend on timing on the meeting and how that, how that happens. Friday, we have our weekly planning meeting as we go forward. I do want to talk about, too, last Saturday, attended a new business opening in South, in Middletown, Gypsy Juice, a new juicing company. They moved into the drive-through area there at the Fast Track Oil Stop by Store 24. It's a neat little thing. As we talk about health and opportunities, this is a purely all-natural and organic juicing station, so no sugars, none of those things that are added in most products. So great to have those two young ladies open up a new business. And, you know, also have another small business that reopened, which was the Jolly Cone. So real interesting to have those opportunities in our, you know, in the south side. So, yeah, so Jolly Cone, plenty of ice cream and whatever else they serve. So on, next week, as said, we have the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. It was rescheduled because of no quorum. I think I may be chairing that meeting as we move forward. I'm still waiting to hear from them. And then obviously, we have the LAFCO meeting that starts at 9:30, right, on Wednesday morning. That's going to be an opportunity. It was a challenge to get that rescheduled, but it looks like we can attend by Zoom or however needs to be done. So we make sure we have the quorum to move forward with that. A very important decision. And hopefully our counsel for LAFCO will have it figured out, and we'll have a smooth path forward on the direction we need to move. On Friday, the first is the weekly planning meeting, again with our home hardening program. And then on Monday, the 4th, meeting with CAO, and then back here on the 5th for the Board of Supervisors Meeting.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Simon, Vice Chair Scott?
Yes. Tomorrow, I have a First Five Commission Meeting at 2 o'clock. That will go till 4:00, 4:30. On Thursday, I have a bunch of doubled-up meetings. I have a Hope Rising Meeting that starts at 9:00, but then we'll have to leave that early. I have a, will be meeting with the City of Lakeport and Congressman Thompson at 10 o'clock, and then lunch with our fire chief at 11:30, and then Cannabis Tax Committee at 12:30. And then I have a Seraptimus Meeting at 5:30. On Friday, I have a meeting about Wellville, talking about them coming to town in a couple weeks. And then Scotts Valley Meeting on the 28th, that's via Zoom at 5:00. I'm really hoping that the Upper Lake community will join us, so we can band together to work on our creek bed cleaning and our levee, getting those up and working.
What time is that?
It is at 5:00. I will send you the link.
Thank you.
Agenda review, I believe, on the 30th at 9:00. I will be attending the LAFCO Meeting. It's at 9:00 on the 30th.
9:30 at Lakeport.
9:30. I did not attend the LAFCO Meeting last week. I really thought it was going to be clean-cut, but I should have known from the history of this that it, it wasn't. But I, I did have a conflicting meeting to attend. So my question would be, I received many phone calls regarding what happened at the last LAFCO Meeting. Should we have legal representation join on the 30th, just to make sure that whatever is done, that we agree legally moving forward? Or can we do that after the fact?
That would be your choice. You can, I can certainly be there on the 30th, or you can do it after the fact. I'll await direction of the board.
I think, I think it would be important to have at least somebody there because
It's Zoom.
I think it would be important.
It's Zoom, so it's easy. And, and Madam Chair, would you like to move up the agenda review to perhaps 8:30 instead of 9:00? So you can be available for LAFCO?
That would be good.
Does that work for you, Mr. Chair?
That works for me, yes.
Okay. We're moving.
And then on the 31st, I have a meeting with, it's an outside, external meeting with Supervisor Crandall and?
It's, it's with the, the state.
With the state?
Yeah, one of the state staffers wanted to talk to us briefly.
Okay. So I have that 11:00. And then on the 4th, a SAFRX Meeting, and then preparing for the meeting on the 5th.
Thank you. So, so I'll go to my calendar and just wanted to state that it was pretty cool to watch the swear-in for the deputies. My son was there, and so Sheriff Martin was trying to recruit him. He's only 16, but, you know, he, he looks tall enough to be a correctional officer already. But, so that was, that was a good event. It felt good to be there. It felt good to see the families. You know, I was talking to some of them about how their kids could probably do well at Upper Lake Elementary, so. Anyhow, as for my schedule, so tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the supervisor from Sierra County about some policies for RCRC. I'll be in Sacramento doing that. Be back here Thursday for the press conference with Congressman Thompson about the full circle with Supervisor Pyska. Following that, the Cannabis Tax Committee Meeting will be following, immediately following that. I had asked Supervisor Sabatier to cover for me Friday. I'm going to, it's called the California Tribal College Meeting. Has to do with tribal stuff. It's not necessarily county business, but I'm just, I'll be out of town going to that. I'm on, I'm one of the border regions for, those appointed, as a board of region for the California Tribal College, which is based out of Yochi de Hay, which is the Cache Creek Tribe, the, the tribe out of Cache Creek. So they're starting a college, and so, yeah, I was appointed under that. Have to go to a meeting on that. So I appreciate you covering for me, Supervisor Sabatier. Then, let's see, 28th, I, I think I'm going to attend that meeting. If, if you're the only supervisor that's going to be there, I think we won't be causing a Brown Act violation, so I think I will, in hopes that some of the citizens that came today will come as well. That way I can add some information or even bring that to the next work meeting. Wednesday, looks like there is a Golden State National Resources Board Meeting, and I'll probably attend that via Zoom. What's this ad hoc? Ad hoc Committee on Wildfire and Forest Stewardship. I'm on the ad hoc committee for RCRC as well. Of course, the agenda review will be at 8:30 that morning. We just got that note. And then the meeting Thursday with, his name is Mason Fong. It's an invitation, and we'll be talking about some, some state issues that affect the county. One of the main things that I highlighted was, is, of course, cannabis reform, and just highlighting our struggles and things like that. It's, this office has been trying to get ahold of me since January, but with the situation with my family, I've had to postpone it, so that's why we're having it now. My, one of the biggest things I'd like to talk about is also talking about funding sources and asking about grants and talking about how it's a very difficult dynamic in place where urban counties tend to get preference over rural counties. And of course, that's something we also talk about in RCRC, but I just wanted to kind of be a sounding board to that and ask them to look at counties in a different way instead of all one-size-fits-all, if that makes sense. But there's just, the more you talk about it, the better, and hopefully it gets through to them. Let's see, Middle Creek Restoration on Monday, the 7th, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Monday, the 4th of April, and then back here for the Board of Supervisors Meeting on the, on the 5th. So I don't think we have anything else here on our agendas.
Mr. Chair, I did miss one report, if I could.
Yeah.
Just go again. So we did have our first quarter meeting in 2022 for the Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Authority. You know, all parties were involved, and we were reporting. You know, I'd like to report that, you know, on the reports you've received from all three jurisdictions, both the county and both city of Lakeport and Clear Lake, about 158 vehicles were abated throughout that. So they're doing a good job. You know, obviously, I know we have other issues. We've talked about it, fining other things that may come along. But the program is continuing, and we also, as of the end of last year, we updated our tenure agreement. So this program will continue in Lake County, and I want to thank all the jurisdiction. Myself and Supervisor Sabatier sit on the board, so we are moving forward and continuing that. So I just wanted to make that report, that we had the Eva Meeting, and that's it.
AB 2374, that's what it's called. Crimes Against Public Health and Safety Illegal Dumping, is that the one?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
There's so many numbers.
There is so many. But it has to do with fining folks. Would increase maximum fines for dumping of commercial quantities of waste from 3,000 to 5,000 for first.
And $20,000 on your third offense.
Yeah, that's it. That's it then. So anyhow, that's all we have when it comes to this agenda. Let me go to the closed session items, because that's where we're going next. And with that, 8.1 will be an employee evaluation, Department of Social Services Director, and 8.2 is public evaluation for the registrar voters. With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you very much for attending with us today, and we appreciate and are grateful for all of the presentations and all of the workers. and all of the workers and employees that have been with us for many years. That was a really awesome thing. Also, meeting a new friend that hopefully gets adopted. All right. With that, we'll go on a closed session. Thank you.